Congratulations to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you say the prayer, please?
Yes. Father God, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the opportunity to be here today. God, we ask for your guidance. Give us wisdom to make the right choices. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Nita, you want to do roll call, please?
So Counselor Lorenz will be absent this evening, and so will Counselor Johnson. Counselor Segola?
Here.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
I'm here.
Motion carries.
Modifications to agenda?
I would like to add myself at G1E. Connor Animal Shelter. I'll be a perp, but just a citizen when I do that part. I can go stand out there.
Need a motion, Senator?
Yes.
It's been moved seconded. Any more discussion? Been moved and seconded to add, modify the agenda, add D to Citizen Comments. For Ms. Ellathorpe. Any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, approval of consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
Been moved and seconded for the approval of consent agenda for the minutes and counts payable? The tree board thing, is that where it's supposed to be?
Yes.
Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're gonna go to Citizen Comments and Special Presentations. Just because of the youth in the room, in order to be included on this portion of the agenda, please file the appropriate form with the City Clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. So we will carry on. So Nita, thanks to Public Works and IT.
So this evening, I would like to show some appreciation for the Public Works crew. Dave, Lowell, Jesus, and then IT, Christian, and Jim. So I don't know if you guys have checked it out yet, but the new courtroom is complete. We had our first court session in there on Tuesday, and it was amazing. Judge loved it, and it just, it looks, it looks extremely professional, and the judge even wants to do some mock trials in there, so I just wanted to show some appreciation. So with some donation, and along with my department from the courts, I'd like to call Christian up.
Stand over there and get a picture of somebody.
And Jim? So Jim and Christian did all of the nice stuff. They told the crew, the Public Works crew, where to put the wiring, the holes and everything like that. And they put it all together. They got the projector up. So the other check it out. Come check it out, because it's, it looks amazing. The next three guys, they worked their butts off to complete the courtroom. And it looks, it looks amazing. So Lowell? Jesus? Thank you guys very much for everything you guys did. And just to let you know, we are gonna be having an open house in the courtroom next month, so. So we will have an open house with the courtroom, and I would like for all you guys to be in the open houses.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate your mind. Anthony, can you go back there and take a picture? Anthony, they're gonna open up the courtroom, and while them guys go back there, you take a picture back there where the work they've done? Is it open already, Nita?
It is open.
Okay.
Good picture time.
So just so the rest of you can kind of see as well. So it should pop up here in just a second. Sorry about that. It's really hard to see. I don't know if you wanna take a look at it this evening, or?
I'm gonna tell you, I was in it prior to these guys working on it, and then I went in around Christmas time. It's amazing. It's absolutely beautiful, and it's something that'll be there for a long time to come. Not that you wanna go to courtroom, but it's very nice.
So you actually will come, so when we have court, instead of everybody coming through the front door and having to come into City Hall, they actually now enter on the backside of the building, the west side, across from the park, they'll enter there. They come into the foyer, where it's a secure place. The officer then opens the door, wands them in, and takes them into the courtroom.
So it's very nice.
Thank you, Esther.
Thank you.
You wait for Rob to get back for the next one?
Yeah.
Bless you. Be sure to take good notes. Thank you, Anthony.
Guess if you like, I can jump to D real quick.
That would be funny.
Okay. So I hired a new deputy clerk, and I'd like to take the opportunity tonight to introduce her to you, so it's Donna Gonzalez. Donna, if you'd like to come up and just tell counsel a little bit about yourself?
Hello, Mayor and City Council members. As mentioned, my name is Donna Gonzalez. I'm originally from New Mexico. I have lived out here for 12 years, and I now consider Mona Vista home. I'm thankful for the opportunity given to me, and I look forward to being a part of the City of Mona Vista team. It's nice meeting all of you, and some I am familiar with, some I have seen before, and I had seen you in the school system, so I do remember you. So once again, nice meeting all of you, and I'm looking forward to being here.
Awesome. Welcome.
Great, welcome.
Welcome, Donna.
Good evening, counsel.
Ladies and gentlemen, just thought I would do a quick presentation for you with the recent snows on our city snow removal policies. Snow removal is one of those things that has to be done, but nobody enjoys it. Nobody enjoys shoveling the snow, and definitely nobody enjoys shoveling the snow twice after we've come through and plowed the streets, and sometimes equates to two or three times. So I just wanted to touch a little bit, if you'll go to the next slide, please. What we actually have as far as our fleet for snow removal. We have one tandem plow with a sander. One tandem plow truck that doesn't have a sander. We use it to haul snow after the storm. One single axle dump that we got for BIA to assist with us at the airport, but we also use it on some of our larger storms like this last one. We have one motor rader, which is a six by six. That's the only machine that we have that is four-wheel drive. So all three of the plow trucks, they're two-wheel drive, and they have the same problems that in a three-wheel drive will have. So on the bigger snows, they can run into some problems. We have one flatbed truck that we use for strictly hauling the snow. We have two motors in our fleet, and two backhoes, and we have one ton pickup of the plow. Those are what we use to plow the city streets, the parking lots, anything that comes up. Our current policy, can you, can you see?
Yes.
Is set up in three stages. The priorities, the number one priority are all main arterials, considered to be the minimum network. Will be open first to provide the transportation system, connecting roads to medical clinics, fire police stations, rescue squad units, the downtown area, state highways, and around schools, and where public safety is concerned. The main reason we plow snow is so that the emergency services can actually respond. All other selected collectors, completing the network covering the major traffic volume streets and selected hotspots. Prime example of this is Sixth Avenue, Second, and North Henderson. And then third, all the remaining local streets, such as the residential areas, will be plowed to the outside, which means curb to curb, if the storm amounts to six inches or more. Okay? And then there's a little caveat at the bottom of the policy. Except for very unusual conditions, all Priority One and Two streets will be kept open and maintained on every snow. When that is not possible, the Priority Two and Three streets will be dropped, and the main Priority One, main arterial streets will be kept open at all times. You experienced a little bit of that this last snowstorm. Just with the duration of the storm, we concentrated most of our efforts on the main arterials and collectors, and then slowly moved our way out into the residential streets. Other items in the current policy. All streets will be plowed to the outside, with the exception of the downtown and the areas around the schools. If we plowed to the center, we haul that area away. The policy also has some prohibited acts. Pushing snow, pushing of snow on the streets. The placing, dumping, or pushing snow on the city streets or rights of ways from adjacent properties is prohibited in residential areas. Residents should shovel snow under adjacent lawn areas. In the business corridor, pushing snow out into the street or the right-of-way is prohibited after the streets and windows have been cleared. Policy actually went into effect September 4th of 2008. So this is an older policy of the city. Unfortunately, it's not one that's been very well enforced over the years. We have a lot of difficulty trying to plow Adams is a prime example. We try to do most of our plow operations in the middle of the night when everybody else is sleeping. And there's usually enough cars parked in the downtown that we said they can't get through with the bull bouts and stuff, and do much more than a single pass down and back. But we do have to branch out into the other sides of the street. We have residents that, and this is a hard part, because I understand that snow is very difficult. I mean, the guys at Public Works, we plow all night, all day for the city, and then we have to go home and clear our own yards, and our own driveways. But the rule, you're not supposed to be pushing the snow out into the right-of-way. Sixth Avenue is a prime example of where we plow it. People, they clean their driveways, and they push it right back out into exactly what we've already cleared. So we have to go back two and three times to keep that road clear. And that happens on second, happens pretty much everywhere in town. When we do venture out into the resident areas, it's even worse. People are all over the place. We have people that shovel and push just to the edge of our property, which I'm fine with. We have other people. We had one person this year, this last storm, that actually pushed out across the city street and piled their snow in their adjacent neighbor's driveway. So those poor people couldn't even get out of their house. So this is a map showing the priority snow. And that's the route. You have to kind of forgive me, I just, you know, like Prospect is up here, First Avenue. I kind of left where the streets were, so I didn't go over them, but we maintain 285, 160, 15, those are the state highways that we maintain through town. We also do all of Prospect. We do Chicago to Ueno, and Solar Avenue there in front of the bank, and Big R, and I call it Jackson, the top values. Do Second in front of the school. We do all Second through the downtown to Washington Adams, Jefferson Road, Madison. Do Sixth Avenue, North Henderson, East Drive, Sky High Trail, and parts of Sherman. So those are what we do on a regular basis anytime it snows. Once we get six inches, then every street in town is plowed. Nobody's happy. I mean, if, my phone rings off the hook with residents that are upset with us, it's not fun. I think there's some issues with the current policy, and I'd like to sit down and kind of address those, not only with counsel, but I think this is a nice opportunity where we include the public. You know, a lot of policies government's set, the public doesn't really get a whole lot of say. There's no set, this is the right way to plow, and this is the wrong way to plow. So problem number one is the current policy is not being enforced. I don't believe that the residential areas are plowed often enough. The residents kind of have a free-for-all, and what happens with that is the third item. You get a lot of snowpack that develops on the roadways from many smaller snowstorms that don't get cleared. You get compacted with the tires, and then when we do get a larger snow, we have, it creates a lot of difficulties, and then it's doing exactly what it's doing right now. That snowpack is turning ice. It's slowly melting during the day, and then it freezes solid at night, and pretty soon you have nothing but a solid sheet of two, three inches of ice. The way it works right now, like Cruz and Lowell, and these guys can tell you, it's been all week hauling snow piles and trying to get things ready for the next snowstorm, which is supposed to come in tonight, tomorrow, this weekend. The six-inch rule allows for a lot of pack to be dealt with, and causes issues with traffic, and there's other issues. You know, one of the hard things about this last plow, you know, when I plowed, was that as we were plowing the residential areas, there was places that our plows would actually break through the pack. And when it did that, it would trip the plow, and whichever side you happened to have the plow angle is the side that it actually took you. So luckily, we didn't hit anything, but when that happens, you're completely at the mercy of the weight of the truck. Vehicles don't stop like a car. It takes them a while, vehicles and stuff down. It also made us do things considerably slower. We weren't able to really plow anything more than three to five miles an hour. If I could try to get up more than that, it'd break through the pack, and then you go. Couple differences, if you wanna compare Arsenal plowing to what CDOT does. CDOT, their plows have hydraulic down pressure, so they can actually use the plow to push through the pack. For us, our plows are chains, so only the weight of the plow is what determines whether that plow rides up on the pack or actually breaks through the pack. We also don't use any salt, or what they call a de-icer in our sand. We put on the ground, it's straight sand. We don't have any site storage area. We'll keep the weather and the snow out of our sand, so we don't use salt. Those are the big differences between the state and the local. And that's why they're in roads, and they have a dry road policy. They stay out of the roads until we're done. We don't have no policy. So what I would like to do is schedule two public meetings to discuss our current policy, and hear ideas from residents as to what they would like to see in our next policy. I propose two meeting dates, January 23rd and January 20th, both at, or excuse me, 30th. Both of them here at City Hall at 6:00 PM. And then probably, if everybody felt it was necessary, a possible revision to counsel by September 6th. So try to keep this up and moving while it's still fresh in everybody's mind, we're still in the middle of winter. And if there's things we can do better, we do those. I'd like to know if counsel can think of those two minutes of work. I don't expect all the power to be in each one of those, but check these two dates, and that way citizens that can't make it on the 23rd can make it on the 30th, vice versa. And have some ideas and see what the public thinks. I like to have as much public involvement as we can in this situation as well.
And those are Tuesdays, right?
They're both Tuesdays.
Both on Tuesday?
Yep, a week apart.
Wednesday.
Or Wednesday.
Oh, they're Wednesdays? Okay, that's fine. Spread the word. Yeah, good. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
You still got one more thing on here, Rob. Introduction?
She hit two?
Where is she? Come on up. I wanna introduce the counsel, my new employee. She comes to us from Aqua Sanitation and Water. Water and sanitation?
Yeah.
So she's a certified operator. She's a water professional. A water professional. She's gonna be working in her utilities. Her name is Rebecca Potter. I am very pleased to have you onboard, so.
Thank you. Hi. Hi.
Hello.
So Rebecca Potter, like you said, I've had three years in the industry, and like you said, I'm a certified water professional. I have quite a few certifications. And I come to Mona Vista, well, because I lived here for three years and was commuting there. I was the lead operator there, so hopefully I can bring some stuff to the table and also learn a lot and grow here. So just really pleased for the opportunity, so thank you.
Great, welcome.
Welcome, yeah.
Is that me? Nita?
Yep, step down to a citizen.
Right, I'm gonna be real honest. If you guys are faint of heart, don't look. Look away. I'm here tonight because this is the night that we will renew the proposed contract with the Connor Animal Shelter. This dog is a Great Dane, and I didn't bring him. He came in, these came in yesterday. This is his, was his pen partner. I named him Mick. He's a boxer. They had actually been left by a family member with an older person in the family, and she had to move to Denver. She thought that they were being taken care of, and you can walk out in front. And she came back to check on them and found them in this, this, and this condition. And sometimes I think that, everybody thinks that the animal shelter is like, I don't know, pit bulls and parolees or something. And in a way, it sort of is. We have a lot of pit bulls. We have an overpopulation of pit bulls in the San Luis Valley, and in Mona Vista and Center and Swatch, way too many animals. We have had an absolute plethora of puppies this year that were bred sometimes intentionally and more often accidentally. And at one time, and I probably shouldn't tell you this, this last week, we had over 55 dogs at the shelter, and our limit is 38. And what we do at the shelter, when we get that many animals in, we can't care for them. I brought him home because we didn't have room, and I wasn't gonna leave him in the shelter anyway. I just couldn't do that. He sleeps at my house and has a nice warm bed, and if you look on his back, he's got sores where he laid in the, on the hard ground. He's got bed sores. And the Great Dane, beautiful harlequin animal, and she had them too. So what we're gonna do, I will take this animal and rehab this guy. I took him to the vet. He has no real problems. But over the course of this dog's rehab, it's probably, it'll probably cost the shelter $400 or $500 to get him back into an adoptable shape, okay? And I just, I just felt like it was important to let you guys see the other side of the shelter, and let you know that if you have animals, please get them spayed and neutered. We by state law and by our board policy, send them all out spayed and neutered. And they have their shots. They have their tracking chip if you want one. He loves me. And, but we get in so many, almost all the animals that we get in are not spayed or neutered, and before we can adopt them, that's one thing we have to do. Last year at the shelter, just in, from Mona Vista alone, we took in 166 dogs. And we also take animals from Center and Swatch and Delmore. We get them out of Alamosa because they have a smaller shelter, and we get some of their overflow. How can you say no? You know, how can we not take them in? The girl called, and we were scheduled for a transport and could not go pick these guys up until the next day. And we were afraid that they were gonna die overnight. They'd never been in a home. They'd never been let out of the pen. And probably, we don't think they've been fed for the six months that this older gentleman had them. And I'm not sure, I don't know if he had a medical problem or something. I'm not blaming him. But this is the condition that sometimes we get animals in. And we are a little bit like pit bulls and parolees, and, but we also have animals like this that are just so heartbreaking. If you follow our Facebook page, we had the most beautiful pit bull that someone found at Alamos Canyon in the middle of nowhere. So we get in the van, in a little van, and we're trucking up Alamos Canyon to pick up this female pit bull that had been left out there for about, well, we know, four days. The guy that was plowing the road had been feeding her for four days. And then another gentleman found her and put her in his vehicle, and we went and picked her up. And she's actually good to go. She's ready to go home with any baby knows. We have a great fence, and it's a good pit bull. But at the end of the day, I just kind of wanted everybody to see, and I really debated about doing this tonight. But I thought, well, it's a good opportunity while we're looking at the Connor contract and to also, gun you guys again. Please come out and volunteer. You don't have to, you don't have to even give money or anything. Come volunteer. Come sit with these guys. Sit in the pen. Sometimes they need to be socialized. This guy just did not, he doesn't even want to go outside. I can't hardly get him to go out. He just wants to come be inside and be warm. And he came in last night and slept in my bathroom for 14 hours. I just, I don't think he slept and been warm for months. But come volunteer. If you have a scout group, or a student council, or you guys have to get community service time, come out and walk animals. We've got dogs. We've got cats. We've got puppies. We've got kids. There's even office work to do, and we just have a lot of me out there. And so say hi to him. I'll bring him back someday, and you'll see what he looks like when he's had some time to eat and get in better shape. If you look, his back end is that wide. And that's what I wanted to do, and this is Bree Sparrowhawk, and she's indispensable at the shelter. She has, she started working and she's worked her way into the office, and she's a wonderful dog handler, and she's just indispensable.
Kathy, walk that dog right over here again while we make sure we get it on camera.
Can we get him to camera?
Outside.
We're open to the public from 10 to 4, I think you're right. And then we, we're there usually about 7:00 in the morning, you know, to clean bins and feed and, isn't he just tragic? And he's the sweetest dog yet. He's a wonderful dog. So if you know anyone, he may be for adoption, but I'm lying, just saying. Isn't he just, and he's so forgiving. I know, he's so forgiving, he still loves people, and doesn't mind that, you know, he's just willing for a pet, you know? I know, I look at my fat dogs. I've got big fat ones that want to go along with him. Thank you, Rob. They love him. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome. He doesn't want to leave now. He's going, "Don't take me out."
Nita, one quick question on that removal of a tree board member.
Now, that was just about your consent.
It's done?
Yes.
Good. Dang, I missed it. Okay, we have citizen comments now. City council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit the comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at the same meeting. Does anybody have anything to say? Yes, ma'am. Be sure and state your name, Margot.
Margot Alexander. I just want to say thank you to Rob and his group. I watch them, I'm on Fourth and Adams, and I know how bad the ice and everything is. And I just want to say thank you guys for the work you do. I see you out there, Chuck, with the trucks and I think you breaking down and what you do. Just thank you for the work you do.
Thanks, Margot. Anybody else? By your group tonight. Jim? Okay. Contracts, agreements, and leases. Contract agreement between City Montavista and Connor Animal Shelter.
So before you, you have a yearly contract that we have with Connor Animal Shelter. If you've had a chance to take a look at that, it is just a renewal of the existing contract that we do each year. So if you have any questions or changes... We, we do, the city does give Connor Animal Shelter $2,500 a month to help run the shelter. That's still part of this contract.
Not all of it, but you're right.
Yes.
No changes in policy, I think that looks good.
I don't take this time, I'm not in position to if I did. So, so yeah, I think it's great. I don't know if I should be the one to move to accept the contract.
I would move to accept the contract, the Connor Animal Shelter in the city of Montavista.
I have to second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the contract for animal shelter. Is there any more discussion?
Thank you.
Quite obvious need. Nita?
Councilor Elkhorn.
Aye.
Councilor Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Forrest, you're in the hot seat, man.
So in your packet this evening, you have a corporate resolution for uninsured medical expense reimbursement plan, blah, blah, blah. Essentially what this is, a resolution that's required by our insurance company for our medical expense reimbursement plan. And so we have a MRF that we're offering for our employees, it's an optional plan that they could take advantage of and put in pre-tax funds that they can then use for, towards medical expenses. And we haven't, actually have pretty good participation in that this year, kind of the first we've offered similar plans in the past, but this year the employees are taking advantage of it. And this just is a resolution that's required by the insurer, so I, you know, obviously recommend that council pass this resolution this evening. I don't think it's a numbered resolution of the city, it's just a corporate resolution.
Is it a head nod, or do we have to have a motion?
I think you need a motion in a second.
Okay, I, I move that we pass that resolution for the medical plan.
No, it's seconded. It's been moved and seconded, that we accept the corporate resolution for the uninsured medical expense reimbursement plan. Any more discussion? Nita?
Councilor Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Second thing on my list tonight is the CCCMA conference, which is the Colorado City County Management Association Conference. As you all know, the CML conference, which is for primarily elected officials, and then this conference is for city and county managers. It's in my budget for this year, but I wasn't sure of the date. And of course, it happens to fall during council meeting, which would be February 7th. The conference is from February 6th to 9th in Glenwood, so I'm asking the council's permission to miss that council meeting so I can go to this conference, which I haven't been able to go to for like three years, so. I think that would be okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. It's a, it's really a good, it's kind of like CML, there's a lot of good idea sharing amongst the managers, and they have some really good presentations generally, so. And CCCMA is associated with ICMA, which is the International City County Manager Association, which of course I'm a member of. So thank you for that. The citizen's Sky High project item, I'd like to delay any decision on that, kind of having some discussions with the architects regarding the change of direction, if you will, from what we originally issued in RFP, that there's been some evolution in thought with the committee on really focusing down on the buildings and not so much of the master planning thing. Obviously, we have master plans from winter of 2006, 2007, there's other ones. So, you know, the committee started discussing, and actually Dale made a good contact on some potential demolition work, which kind of then hastened the discussion of what could happen with the buildings. And based on that, then the committee then said, well, we want to go this other direction. Under our RFP process, we are allowed to negotiate with any bidders, and there was one bidder, so I'm currently discussing with them if they'd want to go forward with kind of a more limited scope of work. It's not quite the big picture, it's much more focused, and actually I have a conversation with them tomorrow. So if we can just skip that for now, I think that'd probably be useful. And then, just as a reminder, on Tuesday, January 29th at noon, you know, we have quarterly meetings with the council and the county commissioners, and those have been breakfast meetings, and those seem to be, you know, provide some level of difficulty, so we're actually planning on having a lunch meeting at Nino's on the 29th at noon, and we have the back room reserved, so I'm hoping that council can all attend that. We've got a new commissioner and then the new commission chair as well, so I think that will be, it should be some good conversation. We got a few items that we might want to talk about working with the county on, so. And that, unless you all have any questions, is all I have this evening. Told you that'd be dangerous. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Forrest.
Thank you, Forrest.
Mr. Tree. Try to be official. Mike, city attorney.
Okay, mayor, council, good to be here. Don't have a real long report, I, there is always lots of stuff going, it seems like in this small town. But, you know, generally, we've had a lot of ordinances that have been approved, and I review those. I try and do the, a couple of them on the illegal use of property we did last, last meeting. And so generally, we'll try and work with Forrest on those. If there's an issue that comes up, I'll review any type of ordinances that may be proposed by Forrest or Nita, either one. Resolutions, you know, just like the one today, even though they, it's fairly standard, I do try and review all that stuff. And, I mean, Forrest has a report almost every week, which is good, and kind of keeps you in tune if there's something going on. For example, the golf course, a lot of questions and issues that may be coming up, looked at all that stuff. And then, of course, last month, we did the independent contractor with Ron Douglas, reviewed and got that contract kind of in place. Also, on the Valley Publishing, we made some changes on a couple of leases with Ron on the, on two different properties here, Valley Publishing and, what's the other one? Guzlo? I don't know. Guzlo, yeah, I wasn't sure how to pronounce that. And we made some changes, I think all, that were in the benefit of the city, but I think overall a good, good agreement. Reviewed a couple intergovernmental agreements with Sky High and the county commissioners and the city. And generally, we, you know, I'll meet with Forrest, and if he's got an issue, there was a temporary use permit that there was questions about, and he'll sometimes ask me to take a look at the letters he sends, or if the chief has an issue, I'll meet with him or the clerk. There's always issues coming up, and try and get back as quick as I can with folks and make recommendations, and off we go. The city, city court has, has been busy the last couple of sessions we've had. I've got a scheduled day every month that we do pre-trials, but it seems like it's been a pretty good way to go to, I go in there early and there's always a lot of people in there, and so we can set them for pre-trials or delay for another month, but the judge and I have decided, well, if we can handle it, we'll take care of the people right now. If they want to try and do something, discuss getting the issue resolved, let's get them, get them done and out of, out of our hair. We need to do some more community service, I'm trying to push some community service, bump the hours a little bit more instead of just a few hours. I mean, it, you know, if you do three hours, it's hard to get anybody to do anything in a way, but you do eight hours and then they've got something to do, so kind of work in that angle a little bit more. The new facility is great, got to operate in that last week, and just very nice. Here, it was a little bit awkward, I'm sitting almost right next to the defendant, and you just don't have any room, and the, the new courtroom is just really nice for the amount of money we have in it, which I don't think is very much. We got a lot of stuff from the Alamosa, I guess, courtroom, and just rebooks first class, and it's something to be proud of. Other than that, I don't really have any additions. If anybody has any questions, we'll try and, try and take care of them, but a lot of stuff going on in this, this place.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate what you do, man. Chief Rosecrans.
Good evening, mayor, councilors. My report, I believe it's in your packet, a little bit of a 2018 year in review. Our events were pretty much right online with what we did in 2017. Added the national night out, pretty happy with that. Had a coffee with a cop. It's been a pretty, pretty consistent success, hasn't quite gone over the hump like I'd like it to. We lost our coffee shop, so that didn't necessarily help any, but we found a new home. We're at Mountain View now, second Saturday of every month, 8 to 10, can go a little longer, but love to have anybody, council's always welcome. Just generally there for the citizens to, to come and see me, not necessarily for me to see them. I do come with agenda, just so there's something to talk about if nobody has anything for me, but I truly just want to make myself available so they don't have to come to my office or meet outside of any kind of weird arrangement, but just there to have coffee and maybe a omelet or whatever. So that's our, that's our plan for the year at Mountain View. I was thinking about moving it around, but I think I kind of lose some, some regularity, maybe a little trouble with advertising, but, so now I think we're just going to try to keep it there and see how that goes. One thing that we're going to do that's a little bit in addition is we're going to do a valley-wide law enforcement leadership coffee with a cop at Starbucks in Alamosa. So every law enforcement leader, all 22 agencies have been invited. We'll see how that goes, but it's the first Saturday in March, March 2nd. And hopefully that will be well attended, and just give everybody a chance, not only for us to network and discuss issues that are, are central to the valley, but hopefully residents will come out and discuss issues that are, that are meaningful for them. So that's our events. The only thing I am still trying to add as part of our goals is actor shooter, shooter training with the schools. We're going to do one with the city next month, I believe, and we're going to do one with the schools right before school gets out. Not exactly sure how extensive, extensive it's going to be, we probably won't use the whole population of the students to try to minimize some of that stress, but we'll definitely use first responders and fire and EMS and try to get some, some training value out of that. Seems a little odd to do it at the end of the year, I know, but that's going to prep us. Three months later, we'll do it again and be probably ready. Learn from our mistakes and be ready for the, when the school year starts. Hopefully I'll have an SRO by then, and everything will kind of, kind of fall in line if everything works out. Statistically speaking for the year, they're kind of, they're there for you. 14,606 calls for service, that's about 40 a day. We're pretty busy still, but we did cut them by almost 2,000. I think that's significant, but it's also a little bit unrepresentative of necessarily reactive calls for service. We were down in proactive traffic stops as well. Some of that, I think is a good thing, because if you look at tickets, they actually went up while traffic stops went down. So quality versus quantity. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of things to be said about interdiction and, and, you know, making a statement and stopping cars, but there's also something to be said about stopping the right car. So I don't know that exactly that happened, but that's my hope. The traffic stops were down about 1,400 in the year, and that's a big chunk of that calls for service. And I hope some of our calls for service were down because our crime was down, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. But of those calls, our reports were pretty much static. We went down just a little bit, 1,214 reports taken versus 1,239. And I think this is significant because I have made a huge push to tell officers, if there's a crime report, then they take a report. It used to be optional if they didn't want to press charges, or the officer got there and things seemed like they just kind of calmed down and everybody's happy, they didn't have to take a report. Well, that's not the case. I don't think that's good for the citizens or good for us when things kind of go south later. in line if everything works out. Statistically speaking for the year, they're kind of, they're there for you. 14,606 calls for service. That's about 40 a day. So we're pretty busy still, but we did cut them by almost 2,000. I think that's significant, but it's also a little bit unrepresentative of necessarily reactive calls for service. We were down in proactive traffic stops as well. Some of that, I think is a good thing because if you look at tickets, they actually went up while traffic stops went down. So quality versus quantity. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of things to be said about interdiction and, and, you know, making a statement and stopping cars, but there's also something to be said about stopping the right car. So I don't know that exactly that happened, but that's my hope. The traffic stops were down about 1,400 in the year and that's a big chunk of that calls for service. And I hope some of our calls for service were down because our crime was down. We'll talk about that in just a minute. But of those calls, our reports were pretty much static. We went down just a little bit, 1,214 reports taken versus 1,239. And I think this is significant because I have made a huge push to tell officers, if there's a crime report, then they take a report. It used to be optional if they didn't want to press charges or the officer got there and things seemed like they just kind of calmed down and everybody's happy. They didn't have to take a report. Well, that's not the case. I don't think that's good for the citizens or good for us when things kind of go south later. We need that initial report. We need that crime reported, not only for statistical purposes, but it's very helpful for me and my supervisors later to try to figure out what was going on when we get a complaint or something blows up. So the reports are down and yet I think I'm mandating that more reports get taken. So having said that, I think, again, crime is shown to be down. Citations are there, up, which I'm, I'm happy with, like I said, considering our, our traffic stops are down. And then our arrests are up. That's what we do. I don't, I'm not surprised by that. Some of the ways in which our arrests are up is indicative of our clearance rates too. Our controlled substances arrests are equal. Our warrant arrests are down. So the only way for our arrests to be up are us solving our crimes. And I think that says a lot for the police force as well. So I'm really proud of that. Administration wise, leadership stability, been a while since we had a promotion. I'm happy for that. We are starting to get a little stability in our, our sergeants and our corporals. We had a little scare with Tyler's cancer, but he's cancer-free and back at it doing a great job. Yes. Currently, we're two officers short. However, we're hopefully just a couple of days away from hiring an officer. Michael Avila out of, well, he's, he's a SWATCH deputy right now. He's actually a Monti resident, wants to come back home and work with the Monti police and hopefully we're happy to have him if everything works out in his final testing. But he did accept his offer today. He's just doing his final tests that, that are required. So hopefully we'll have that spot filled in a very short time. We also have a code officer that we've extended a, an offer to. And I'll talk, you guys know about the debacle there. We basically went through three code officers in about 14 months. The bizarre side of that is from what we can gather, it has absolutely nothing to do with the city, the job, the pay, you name it. It was just, they needed to go for their own personal reasons and they went. Made it very hard on us. That's a unique job. It has a learning curve and it's very important. I think that Shane was doing an amazing job, but whatever happened, happened. And, you know, I don't, I couldn't report if I had to. I just don't know what happened. But he's, he's gone and hopefully we'll get him replaced and get somebody doing the really quality work that he was doing because I think we were all pretty happy with him. I'm proud. We got all of our post-training done. All of our requirements were done clear back in July. So we, we really got on our training requirements, our post-certifications. And we pretty much doubled our ma, a minimum training requirement. So we did, 24 is the minimum requirements. And there's kind of a, a designed way in which you have to provide those with skills training. We pretty much doubled everything and then some. We had almost 50 hours of training per officer, not counting what they chose to do outside. That was just in-service training that we provided with firearms, arrest control, driving, courtroom testimony, ticket writing, policy, you know, those, those kind of things. So that was all our own instructors, including myself, providing training for ourselves and each other. Happy with that. Personal equipment, huge strides here. You know, again, I think this is one of the places that you really need to be proud of. Your city, you're taking care of your cops the best that you can on all areas except one and we know that one and we're going to probably work on that this year. But their cars are in good shape. Their uniforms are in good shape. Their equipment is adequate and they're trained on how to use it. And I think they're doing a great job. So know that and we'll worry about that last little piece hopefully this year. Talked about code, so I'll skip that. I did include a copy of the, the crime reports, what's called the incident activity report. It's at the end. It's for your leisure, but if you have any questions, please either email me or if you have them now. But it compares, it's the direct comparison between 2017 and 2018. And it led me to my goals last year, which I didn't really change much because I didn't write my 2018 goals to be single year for the most part. It, it's a lot to get done when you come into an organization or when you're trying to make some pretty radical change in any one year. And I was probably more aggressive than I even should have been. But having said that, the goals are here. They're identical. And all I did was kind of update a few wins and losses. And in that category, right off the top, the property crime reduction, which I think is huge because it's, it's a, it's a systemic measure of the bigger problem that we were trying to attack and that's addiction and drugs. And by reducing that by 15%, property crimes across the board, I think we won. It didn't quite hit my goal, but I think it's still a win. That's pretty significant. And we're going to continue to focus on prevention, directing hotspots for patrolling. And again, lead is on its way. I don't, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that because I think everybody kind of knows what that is. We have a huge meeting next Wednesday. That's going to be our kickoff if we can get a case manager hired. We've already done one round interviews, didn't get anybody out of that one. We're going to have to do another round interviews next Tuesday. Hopefully we'll get a case manager out of that and we'll go to work first of March. So we'll, we'll be pretty active there as well, I hope. The revitalization of Neighborhood Watch, I think we're well on our way to doing a lot of what needs to be done. We all know we have more planned with Project 365 and continuing to just help with our education. We, you know, Nita's active in PIO and we're just going to continue that work. I think it was very helpful in making National Night Out what it was and what we continue to do. And I have great support and lots of help. Some, several of them are here right now. So thank you. My advisory committee, we, I can't thank them enough. They really got me kind of started in my, my staffing plan. I went through the, my, my Northwestern Command Staff School as well, and I was able to present that pretty significant. And I think all encompassing staffing plan to you and how we're going to focus on, I think, several areas that are important. So I can't thank them enough and I'm going to continue to, to work with them. And they're helping me also with the K-9 Fund Board of Directors, which I, I think there's going to be a potential to have enough donations and money involved in that, but the last thing I wanted to do was have it something that I'm controlling. Just too many hands in the pot that are directly related. So having them be, be help, helpful with not only the organization, the funding and then the distribution of funds for that, or this is going to be great. I think we're up to $4,500 already through donations and that doesn't count the six, the $15,000 donation from El Palmar and hopefully another $4,000 from the Alcott. That's been, been promised, given the set of circumstances, that I think we've met all of our requirements. So we'll, I'll let you know as that progresses, but I think we're doing very well there. I'm going to continue coffee with a cop. We're going to continue to try to increase resources through the 2020 plan that I presented earlier this year. We're going to continue to fight on recruitment and maximize retention. I do think we've come a long way in providing a, a very safe, comfortable, friendly, family-type atmosphere for them to work. We're talking about the last piece of that's pay, but then also making sure that they just feel like they have a home here. And I think help by hiring the, the people who live here has been a big help for that. And by trying to provide training and, you know, and just trying to make sure that they feel like they're, they're part of the, the new, the most, you know, happening per, part of the profession that we can has, has gone a long ways. Haven't done any career fairs yet, but we have done a lot of academy visits. We're working on an internship right now that probably not going to spend a lot of time explaining because it didn't exactly work out like we started, but it's working. So we'll, we'll, we'll talk more about that when we get to kind of the, the topics about pay. But we do have a young man by the name Brandon Steven hired here right now. He's working in a paid internship program while he's going through the academy. And it's a, I think it's one of those ways where we get maybe a little bit ahead of the others that are out there looking for a really good candidate. We get them locked in, they get a little bit of pay and they learn a whole lot in the six months leading up to his graduation in May. I hope that not only does he learn enough to make his FTO program, his Field Training Officer program pretty seamless, but maybe even he jumps into the middle of it as opposed to the beginning of it after six months of training. So it's a way that city manager and I kind of thinking outside of the box without going completely to the training an individual right off the street and sending them to the academy. This was a way for us to try to get someone in the academy and arrested in us and helping them to start learn about the job while they're learning in the academy. And again, he's a local guy. He's always wanted to be a cop and he always wanted to be a money cop. So hopefully that'll, that'll work out in my favor. He's doing very well in the academy. According to the director, he's one of the top students as well. So that's pretty neat. Cars, not even going to go into that, but we kind of got parts, part of that done. And thanks to Ginny and Forrest, we got some money in the budget for this year. So we'll see how that goes. We did add the K-9s. You know, that was, that was a win. We've been doing really well there. I talked to you about the, the successes. They're up to almost a half a pound of illicit drugs off the street, not counting marijuana. That's pretty cool. They've been pretty busy. 55, I think deployments and about 100 and whatever that is, 165 grams for six ounces of, of bad stuff. So that's pretty cool. Grant funding, we really kind of did exceptional, I think, in this category considering. We got post grants. We got a vest grant. We got some home line security stuff for, for equipment. We got CDOT grants, 80-plus thousand dollars for equipment and overtime, which has been really good. And then we got an unexpected $10,000 out of a 19, or 2014 drug bust that somehow we just got forgotten. And we didn't, we didn't get our seizure money from Arizona, I believe. And they called us up and said, hey, we have some money down here. Okay, send it. So we got some radios and about $10,000 worth of radio equipment from Motorola. War four radios and pack, and the microphone and extra batteries, kind of out of nowhere. So that was pretty good. So kind of things. So that would put that, I mean, nearly pushing $100,000 with unexpected money into the budget and for the officers. Building improvements are coming along. I think the team room worked out really good and I'd love to have you guys back anytime you get a chance to come through the PD when you, when you have time. Got a lot, a lot of other stuff to do, but the team room's, I think, been a huge success with the officers. It was, and they're not happy when they have to change, but once the change has been done, sometimes they're happy. And in this case, I think they're happy, but it, it was a, it was a little bit of an uphill battle. The mobile Seattle terminals, IT's talked about this before. We had plans, I think, to try to get four done, 10 total. We got two done, one since the beginning of the year and probably one within the next week or two. So we're going to be on pace to fill up. If all goes well by end of the year, we'll have mobile, mobile car computers in every car and working through how that's going to take us into the future. It's been very well received by the officers that have them. Very happy with what they're able to do out in the field. And that's, I think, helping the citizens as well. We got everybody certified to use that. That's just part, but both of those bullet points are basically the same. We did the post turn, post-training requirements. We did a lot of SERSA training this year online. We're going to do even more, it sounds like this year with the help of our HR director. The, we did the good, we were able to get in, in-house staffing certifications. So we have taser trainer, firearms trainer, intoxicator trainer, SFST trainer. I know that probably you're like, what the heck's he talking about? But that was a real bonus. So we're able to train our own as opposed to having to send people out. That's, that's a big deal for us. And we've had a, a rest control instructor as well, but those are what we added. Our Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, all that, I don't think we've been as successful as I'd hoped in that area, but hopefully with Nita's help and maybe even my, my wife's help, we can try to get that going again. I do think we got off to a good start, but then it kind of died. We had, our SRL came and went. We had some IT issues and I think we have a lot to learn with doing social media right. So having said that, I think we didn't get anywhere near what I'd hoped, but hopefully we'll continue to work on that in, in 2018. Our relationships, I think, with everybody listed there have been really great. I have no complaints. I know the DA's offices really struggle just like we have with really good personnel in the valley. That's been a struggle, but I think our DA is coming around and she's, she's doing the same as us. She's just trying to work through it the best that she can. The, the commitment to active shooter training is, is a must and I'd also like to commit our department to become accredited. It's a monumental task to try to do. But my goal for this year is towards the end of this year and the first of 2020, I'd like to have the, so the Colorado Association of Chiefs Police could credit us and basically give us the, the gold star of yes, you're doing everything right within industry standard and, and kind of acceptable sort of limits. So that's us in 2018. Hopes for 2019. I hope it's kind of been what you guys have expected and, and hoped for. And if there's any questions, let me know and we'll look forward to our discussions for 2019.
Thanks, sir.
Anything? Absolutely. It's been a good year.
Lots of progress.
Yes, I agree. I hear a lot. Two things to consider when you're in this position is complaints and citizen concern. They both reduced considerably and I've had more comments or accommodations in the last several months than I ever had. So I, I do think, you know, that's a, that's kind of a double bonus. The, the citizens feel comfortable to say something and my guys are hopefully doing the best they can. Doesn't mean it's always exactly what the customer wants, but it hopefully is done in a respectful and, and appropriate manner. And I do think that's the case. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Welcome. Hi again. So just wanted to take a little time and kind of go over my report. Let's see. Well, Happy New Year. Most of what we've been doing since the holidays have been snow removal. So crews have really worked tirelessly clearing the streets and removing snow from the downtown sidewalks. Some of the other things that's been going on is in our parks. When Vic isn't out shoveling sidewalks, he's working on sanding and repainting all of our picnic tables. We've been doing, I don't know, we're probably halfway through our, our selection of picnic tables. The streets have, like I said, that entire crew have pretty much been on the plowing, sanding, shoveling and hauling snow. They also were the ones that were here tonight that did the courtroom remodel. And I'm really proud of the job they did. I kind of gave them an idea when we went over. When Nita asked us to go over to courtroom C in Alamosa and pull what we could out of there. They took my idea and, to use a baseball analogy, they simply knocked it out of the park. I mean, Lowell, the supervisor brought in some materials that he had laying around his house as a cost-saving measures for us. It's, like I said, really did an outstanding job. And I really invite the public here if you guys want, and have time after a meeting, feel free to go into the courtroom and take a look at it. It's quite, quite nice considering where it started. So. The utilities, they've still working up until this last snowstorm, we still had contractors running around through town doing natural gas and fiber optic lines. That's pretty much slow to a, to nothing right at the thing. The utility guys are usually the ones that are primarily the ones doing out and shoveling the sidewalks. So while the streets are out doing the snow, on the bigger storms and stuff, the utility guys get to do all the hand shoveling. So they've been pretty busy. Our wastewater plant, you got to meet our new person, Rebecca Potter. Really nice. We had a good interview pool this time. It was nice to be able to have somebody that actually had the certifications that we've been working so hard to get the rest of the crew. Have high hopes for her. I think she'll be really fantastic for us. On our maintenance side, Chris has been pretty busy. You know, when you start plowing snow, things start to break and he's spent a lot of time keeping the plows and everything up and running. And in between, he's been working on the city vehicles and done some things for the chief. I think he got another, got the code enforcement truck done this week. He's been doing that and he's added fabricate brackets and stuff. So he's been really busy. On my side, I'm still working on closeout items. We have a couple of grants and a loan that we need to be closing out. So I'm still working on that and I still continue to be the initial attack on any of the snowstorms. It's kind of a couple of things. First and foremost, snow plowing is something I truly enjoy. So it's a break for me. It's also a cost-saving measure for the city. I'm a salaried employee. I don't get paid overtime. So by my doing the first 15 hours, that saves the city 15 hours worth of manpower that we have to pay. So it, it's a win-win for me and the city. Still continue to do that. We started some of our new year stuff. The RFP for Engineering Services closed on the 15th and we're in the process of doing the evaluations and I'm looking forward to having that. doing the evaluations and I'm looking forward to having that in front of you on February seventh, so we can do an award for the next three years for engineering services for Public Works and going to continue to do that. So we've got a couple of other things that we need to do and I'll open up for any questions. I would like to final offer forest of thanks. You guys know I've been dealing with some, some medical issues and he's been gracious enough to let me adjust my schedule. I am officially healed. Have my last treatment tomorrow, so back to normal, as normal as my folk will ever be. So very happy and thank you very much for letting me adjust my schedule a little bit. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Glad you're all healed up, Rob.
So I, there's a few things I would like to go over with you all. Couple of things that wasn't in the report. If you notice tonight, your packet's ninety-seven pages long. Something, you know, cost savings is to, if I can get you all to go move forward into the twentieth century, if we can go for some notepads, how would that sound to all of you?
Mm-hmm. I like that idea.
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Jim? Okay.
Much better.
Okay. I just, you know, printing the packets for you and then printing packets for the public as well, it just, it, it turns out to be, you know, at least two rings of paper, especially when you have a report that's ninety-seven pages long. So, and ink, yes. The other thing that wasn't in my report was I had the first backyard chicken application go out last week. So, so those should, hopefully, everybody who is at the meeting will turn in an application and come into compliance. So you all met Donna. She's been with me two weeks now and she's doing a fantastic job. She's learning quickly and it's going to be nice to have somebody help pick up and get things back online. I will be attending the planning and zoning meeting on January twenty-fourth. Going to be presenting an Airbnb draft ordinance to them, so hopefully that'll be coming to you in February sometime. Couple of things that we need to discuss, the charter review that we had originally scheduled to begin in January, the couple of community members that had signed up, one of them can't do it, the other one, I, I don't know where they disappeared to. So we need to get that back on track. I'd like to get that going no later than February, so we can start that. We also need to get the annexation review going. So I don't know, you know, I know that takes a lot of time to have two separate things going on with everything else that you guys have going on, but I think those are very important items that we need to get moving forward with. So I would like, you know, we don't have a full, all the council members here tonight, so maybe at the next council meeting, we can pin down a date that you guys want to begin those meetings, put it out to the public that if you're interested in being on those committees, to please get in touch with myself or Forrest and we can get you on our list so we can get those two projects started. Mayor Becker, I'd like to start having some meet and greet meetings with the public. I'd like to start out with just you, kind of like following in the footsteps of Coffee with a Cop, get you out there, let's get, get it going and then maybe alternating each council member every month. But let's, I'd like to get that started in February as well. So if maybe we could get together and pin down a date to start that in February and we'll get that put out there as well. Because we don't have a full board tonight, I'd like to go ahead and table the boards, the list of boards that everybody has chosen to sit on. That way we can get everybody to commit to who, what boards they're going to sit on. Big change coming this year. This year is election year. We have two council seats open, so both Councilor Oathorpe and Councilor Lorenza's seats are open. So the last day that they will be on board would be December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. If you want to run or anyone in the public that is a citizen of Montevista would like to run, I would need to have the intent to run in my office by July twenty-sixth. And then after July twenty-sixth, it gets crazy. So, so the election is, it's coming around and we really need to be thinking about that. Business license renewals are coming in, so all the businesses have been sent letters that it's time to renew their business license. Everybody's complying, they're sending their renewals in. There've been a couple of businesses that opened that I, I'm assuming weren't aware that they had to have business license, so I've visited them and they now have business license. So I try to make it a point to get out into the community, welcome the new businesses, meet them, give them my card, so if they have questions regarding, you know, what they're doing with their business, if they want to change. So that's one thing. The other big thing too, that is not in my report, is vendors. So we have a lot of events that happen during our, the summertime, a lot of events at Sky High that the vendor's coming into. The vendors are required to get a vendor's permit, it's a five-dollar permit for each event. If they want a vendor's permit for all year, it's twenty-five dollars for a year permit. I'm going to start attending the first opening of each event to make sure that all the vendors are registered. We've had a lot of times in the past, prime example with the gun show, I think the gun show had fifty-some vendors, I had three vendor license. So those are just things that I'm going to do and make a change for two thousand and nineteen and with the help of my deputy clerk, it's going to make it a lot easier. We can alternate those events, get out there, get some exposure, let people know that we are, you know, trying to better our community and put a face to the name and show our support for those events as well, as well. The next big event in our community is the Mountain Film on Tour. It's hosted by the Chamber. They're going to be doing a, I guess it's kind of a meet and greet with the, with the filmmakers at the Facet Building on January twenty-fourth from five to seven. And then they'll move over to the Valley Three Theater at seven-thirty to show the short films that they've created. Some of those films are within the valley, other of the films are without, outside the valley, but they're all Colorado-based films. Then you have the Rocky Mountain Ag Fest in February, on February fifth at the Sky High. Both of those events have applied for special event permit liquor license, so there will be liquor, they liquor license at both of those that have been approved. In your packet, I attached the, just some fact sheets about the new liquor law changes, what it means for us, what the liquor laws are for the industry, what it means for the convenience stores, Safeway. Safeway is currently the only one right now that is, take it, has taken advantage of the, the new liquor law. Court, like I said, it was a successful opening court day Tuesday and I really would encourage all of you to please stop by and take a look at our new courtroom. It is absolutely wonderful and I can't find enough words to thank Public Works and IT for everything they did and the cost savings was tremendous. Between what the County of Alamosa gave us, Rob and his crew going over and picking it up and then building the dais and everything in that courtroom and IT doing what they did, let me put it this way, that entire room cost less than three thousand dollars. So please stop by and take a look at it. You have any questions?
I'm it tonight and I'm the last of the reports, so. Good evening, counsel. Mr. Mayor, you have before you the last two months of our routine reports. I'd like to point out a few things for you. Sounds like my colleagues here have stolen most of our thunder tonight, so I don't really have a lot to add, but I just wanted to point out, some of the stuff, especially my crew has been working extremely hard on, is we were notified of an issue with our intoxicator that is shared with State Patrol, is that right, Chief? Apparently, the intoxicator had never properly talked to the state and the officers in both departments were having to fax results and use telephone lines to transmit results, which resulted in quite a delay in what they needed to do. And this became apparent when the state needed to do an upgrade to the device and could not do that in a reasonable amount of time. We tackled that issue and we established an encrypted tunnel to the state, could not send that tunnel over our existing network because of our own internal use of those ports and nobody could change any of the ports for that encryption. So we were able to utilize our secondary connection here at the city to establish that connection. That was, I, I just got to give big kudos to Brandon and Christian for staying on top of that. That was not easy work, not average work that you see from your IT, small-town IT to establish that level of communication with the state. But that's now all up and running now and we're able to transmit reports. We no longer have to rely on fax machines, telephone lines. And when the state needed to do what would have been a multi-day upgrade to that system, they could do that in a matter of hours. So very proud of them on that. Other things that have happened in the last few months, we lost our PIO position, which was Azrael. When she left and we did not continue that position, IT stepped up and took over the PIO, your Public Information Officer duties during that timeframe. Since then, your city clerk has become our new Public Information Officer and IT, and she's doing a wonderful job. We have a new respect for PIO after having to train her and see exactly all of the day-to-day operations it takes to be the PIO and, but we have successfully transitioned to turn that completely over to Anita and she is about as trained as we can make her. She is finding stuff we couldn't find, so she's doing a marvelous job for the city. I think you've got a real treasure there. As the chief mentioned, we kind of started to fall a little bit behind on tough book delivery of what we thought we could do, but we did successfully get the third tough book, which also related to the VPN issue, which is part of what delayed that delivery. We had to solve that issue before we could get that delivered to the police department, but that is now three in the fleet right now at five thousand dollars apiece in, in value. So that's fifteen thousand dollars worth of mobile data devices now in your police cars. As the chief mentioned, we'll have another one in, within the next few weeks. That'll put you at twenty thousand dollars worth of donated computers in the fleet and operational. We have not seen any issues with these computers from the officers. They seem to love them out there. They really help with the report writing in the field and lets the officer be out in that field instead of in an office writing reports. So, and then we anticipate six more this year, so it'd be a total of ten within a year and a half, so some fifty thousand dollars worth of donated computer systems. The State Patrol donated quite a bit of the docks, got us started. Fleet has been putting those in the cars and then IT has been putting the computers together and putting those in the cars. Everything else that's in my report pretty much has been covered by all my colleagues, as I said. The courtroom was a little bit of a challenge. We're kind of proud of some of the technology that's in there. They have, along with the council chambers, getting a sound system upgrade. The courts also got that upgraded sound system, that upgraded recording capabilities. They got upgraded projectors that are LED, not bulb-based, that are wireless, so they can just, no wires connecting them. Anybody in that courtroom can connect to that projector and transmit to the screen. We got computer systems, working with the police department. We took some of the newer computers that we had bought for them the previous year. We gave the police department these laptops and then we were able to reutilize those computers in places like the courtroom to save that cost to the city.
That's great.
So the, that's really my report for tonight. Have any questions for me?
Do not. You guys do a great job. I, compared to you guys and your technology stuff, I can tear it up, but it's up to you to fix it.
Don't tear up the tablets. When we get your new tablets, don't tear those up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
All looks like we got council reports.
I'm going to make mine really quick because I have a rather strangest dog sitting in my car. I have, I'm on the golf course, that's one of the committees I decided to join and they met. I was unable to go to that meeting, it was on a Sunday, but I've talked to Jake a lot and the council, along with the golf course folks, have decided to have a work session on the nineteenth of February and you, as public, are invited and encouraged to attend that work session. I know you all have thoughts and ideas about the golf course. He wanted me to let you know that they're maintaining status quo as of right now. They've got their members, some, some early membership fees in and they've been able to keep paying their bills. And they've got a, a new punch card system that allows someone for a hundred bucks to buy like five games, five, which is better than the entire golf course membership and sort of makes it seem a little more publicly inviting to me. But please come to that meeting on the, on the nineteenth of February. It'll be here at City Hall at six, is that correct? And, yeah, I encourage you to attend because they're, they're a part of our community and the golf course is an important piece that we need to work on as a city and as a community, so come to that. I missed the, the school meeting and some other things, but.
Vicker, you good? Nothing?
Well, we're going to stay here another hour for, just for me. Just kidding. We sat back here and listened to what Jim and his team has brought to us from Alamosa and how Alamosa's shared with us, what everybody's participated in with the courtroom, Alamosa's sharing that stuff with us, so. This was something that was brought up at a meeting that I just spent the whole week at and I thought it was quite fitting for Montevista. We are all members of a local community. If we act like it, we will be successful. So it's not just Montevista. We're mountain range to mountain range. We're all a community and we're acting like it because we are becoming successful. A lot of thank yous to go out to the city crew in the snow, what they do and what everybody has done in the citizens. Outside of a few of the complaints that we've had, there's a lot of people that really stepped up that I see and I'm really appreciative to the citizens in Montevista for that. So with that being said, we will adjourn to, adjourn to February seventh. Adjourn to February seventh.
Wow.
So, and you kids need to, it's great seeing you here and don't just discredit it to your classroom, stay involved because you are our future. Meeting adjourned.